I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Here.
Dick Sample?
Here.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yeah.
Harry Jennings?
Here.
John Green?
Here.
Tim Mann? Rich Evans?
Here.
Tiffany Peter? Kim Frostcroft?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make one correction to the agenda.
Sure.
I don't, it's not a correction, but could we move the action items to the first or the second or something instead of all, everybody having to wait through the, um...
Wait through the audit report and all that?
Yeah.
Is that...
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
So move action items to the...
Just do action items before the, uh...
Mayor's report.
Before mayor's report?
Yeah.
So do clerk's report, treasurer's report, and then action items?
Yeah, clerk's report, treasurer's report, action items, mayor's report, committee reports.
Sounds good to me. Sure.
Awesome.
Motion, uh, second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, Jason?
Jason, say it.
Comments from the floor? We have four here.
Tim?
Yes. How's everybody doing?
Good, sir.
Aye.
Thank you. August is on?
No, it's not, sir.
You can talk while I'm taking care of this.
That ran too long. I know. Thank you board members, Mayor Jennings. My name is Jay Stansfield. I've been farming in a builder's farm for twenty-two years. For those of you not aware, that was formerly a sewage lagoon, so it's not top-quality farming by any means. And, uh, I've learned that the board would prefer to have cash rent instead of crop share. And I don't have any problem with that. But I need to let you know that when I started farming there, it was just basically a swamp hole. I brought in my own equipment, dirt scraper, probably three different times over a few years, leveled it, put drains, ditches in it, and bought a ditching machine to maintain them ditches every year. And I never charged the village or complained about doing it one time. And that's went on, like I said, for twenty-two years. And there's constant picking up of concrete chunks on the property out there. When they re-escalated the levees out of there, I mean, it's just constant. This spring, I did a tillage over the leaves, which is extra work, too. Tilled the leaves in, did a fraction. We did an extra tillage over there, put some leaves in the ground.
Finch?
And I brought up concrete chunks. Well, it's getting planted to corn, so when the concrete chunks show up, you can't see them in those stalks. So when you harvest it, you got tall corn stalks, you can't see it. So it's gonna get rotated to beans, so you wanna make sure you get the chunks all picked up so you don't run them through the combine because it runs low to the ground. So we did that, and we picked up, uh, what then, six?
Sixty, um, man, lower buckets.
Man, lower buckets? About eight ton of them, you know, concrete chunks. And this goes on every few years out there. And, uh, of course, I keep the ditches maintained, and I never complain about, you know, the compaction that the leaf spreading does or the extra passes I have to do to prepare to build or plant. But the main issue you got going on out there, there's no legal access to that property. There's no easement, there's no frontage, and I have permission from the neighbors to cross their land with my equipment, and the whole of the village is drained out of there as well as mine. And I don't understand how you're gonna put out a piece of property for cash bids on rent when you can't guarantee access to it. I just don't understand how that'll work. Now, I don't have a single problem with paying cash rent. I pay cash rent on other farms, and that's fine. But the disadvantage of, to the village with the share crop that goes on, is you're not entitled to any subsidy from the federal government. So last year, I made three more thousand dollars out there than you did because you didn't get those subsidy. We, we used to be able to arrange it where you could, I could be the whole operator and draw all the subsidy and pay it to the village back, but then that messes up the insurability of the crop because if I have a loss, it shows that I have full interest in the crop and only paid half of the premium, and I'm asking for more than half of any loss that I have. So they wouldn't let us do that in order to get the subsidy to the government, which is perfectly legal to do until you turn in an insurance claim, like for replant or something like that. So, you know, with that being said, I've, I've been a pretty loyal tenant there, and I still have permission from the neighbors to cross there, and I don't have any problem with figuring up, uh, something as far as cash rent goes, but, you know, I've, I've got a big investment there, too. They didn't give me that dirt scraper and that, uh, uh, ditching chair, nine thousand dollars. Now, the village, to your credit, you did go in and put in some underground drainage top, but Gordon Jumper tried to get me to pay for half of it. I said, "You gonna give me a twenty-year lease on it, like you get the deductible for twenty years?" He said, "No." I said, "Okay, I guess the discussion's over." So then I thought, "Well, if they're gonna throw in and buy..."
Sir, I gotta, I...
Underground village.
I have to cut you off. I, I do apologize.
Is that five minutes?
Yep, you, your five minutes is...
Okay.
Uh, but we can't take any action on this yet, anyway. Um, as soon as we could take action would be our, our next board meeting. So what I'm gonna recommend to you is that, uh, we're gonna, if you wanted it, hang out. If not, well, I'll let you know when the next committee meeting would be, anyway, but we're gonna discuss this at our next committee meeting.
Okay.
And I can put you on the agenda, and we can talk about it to our heart's content then, and we can have a lot more interaction back and forth then.
Okay, okay.
So if, if you like, if you wanna hang out till the mayor's report, we're gonna schedule committee meetings, and you'll know what it is then. If not, I can just...
You'll be notified.
Yeah, if not, I can give you a call.
I'll get one.
Yeah.
You guys got a long night ahead of you on the other stuff I heard on radio. Well, anyway, thanks for your time, but I just wanna let you know, but, you know, that, my five minutes is up, but there's an issue of entrance to that property.
I understand.
Thanks for your...
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you.
First of all, don't wanna talk for five minutes. I'm Kevin Jennings, and, uh, my wife and I own and operate a personal steel roof on 140th Vandelia, and own the house at seventeen twenty-two South Main, which is forty feet maybe from the establishment of the new bar, uh, Hundred Tub. This will affect us in a very negative manner. Won't go into personal items, which I've spoken many of you about, but, uh, just having a bar that close with the different aspects of people that, that come and what they do and where they're gonna go and where they're gonna smoke and where they're gonna hang out. I have dogs, and, uh, they're gonna, when they come and go, if there's anybody in the back, I'll wear all gonna know it. I'm gonna have to spend quite a bit of money on fences because this happened, which I'm not looking forward to. It's a, it's a safety threat for me in my business, and, uh, I have to deal with the parking lot and, and who's gonna get there and how they're gonna get there. They're gonna walk right through my yard. I have, uh, I'm running bars in my younger days, and I have a pretty good idea how drunks act, and I know they're not generally respectful after a few hours of other people's feelings or concerns. So I, I do appreciate what Stacy and her husband have gone through, and I do appreciate what they wanna get done, and I hate to discourage anybody from opening a business or thriving in the area, but in, in my situation, I, I have to come and I have to speak up for my interests, which this would definitely negatively impact. I don't know the names, but the couple that live directly across the street from me that just bought the brick house, I went over and talked to them. They, uh, have small children, and that's why they're not here this evening, I'm sure, but they, they expressed negative feelings about it. They're against it because they will have a direct view of it, and then the people directly to ignore them one now feel the same way. I don't feel that very many people know about this. It wasn't on the items in the newspaper. It wasn't on the edition of the newspaper. It was on the review, which I appreciate. But I, most people I talk to about it have no idea what's going on, and they see the zoning signs, but they don't know what that's about, and it doesn't affect them if they don't care. Once they see it, they will. Is that five minutes?
Uh, you got, you know, almost a minute left, if you want.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And like I said, uh, don't take this lightly. Uh, come here with a heavy heart. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Danny?
Can we leave without disrupting?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, thank most of you know me. My name's Danny Archolone. I own the apartment complex at one twenty East Vandelia. Uh, also own the house across the street, which is one twenty-one East Vandelia. Own a house at four oh nine, four oh nine South Bill Drive. That's where I live. Uh, when I bought that property, uh, it was rundown, and, uh, the fleas were there sometimes, two, three times a night. Uh, since I've bought it, uh, they've maybe been there five times total, which is ten years. I spent several thousands of dollars remodeling it, and the people that live there are, have mentioned that they're concerned about the trash and the noise and the parking. Uh, I got a petition, went arena, put up, put in the other, uh, gaming and had to have liquor license, and we got it voted down, and Stacy was one of the ladies that voted against it. And Paul was one of the ladies that voted against it, and the rest of you are new. Stacy come to me and ask if I minded, I said, "As long as it doesn't affect me and the business and the neighbors, I, I won't say anything." I didn't. And, but I've had too many people come to me and say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And I, I said, "I, I don't really like it. I didn't like it before. We got it voted down because the mayor made the mistake of issuing a, a liquor license before the zoning was correct." They got to put it in, and it's there illegally as we speak as far as the zoning goes. I get along with these people extremely well, and I will keep it that way, but I'm not in favor of having a tavern there. And I think, as mentioned, that, uh, that her son is wanting to put in a, a head shop next to it, and for, if you, you don't know what a head shop is, it's a dope parlor. So I don't really think we need a dope parlor and a tavern right right next to each other for either one. If anybody has any questions they'd like to ask me, I'll be glad to answer.
How many, uh, how many apartments are in here?
Ten.
Okay.
George?
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Mayor, trustee, attorney of office. I wanna thank you all for the immediate time and the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I know there's an important issue with a special use permit on the agenda tonight. As of September the first, I've lived in the village forty-five years, so I feel like I have some responsibility to air my feelings also. Some of you may know why I'm involved with an organization called Mothers Against Drum Driving. I got involved when the town drunk, a Jacksonville local man that I knew very well, ran over and killed my twenty-four-year-old daughter as she stood in front of the village bicycle shop thirty-five years ago, a beautiful July fourth day. So I got involved, and we're trying to make a difference. The man that killed my daughter was served, over-served in three local taverns in Jacksonville. He left the taverns, proceeded trying to drive that weapon home to the apartments next to Horace Labor Drive and killed my daughter at five twenty-eight on this beautiful Wednesday afternoon. So what I'm trying to do tonight is to put some figures before you, and I know you've got an important issue to vote on. You know, we have made a difference in drum driving fatalities, but we're still looking at thirty Americans a day being killed, nearly eleven thousand per year, just in alcohol-related traffic crashes. These are preventable crimes, preventable deaths. Some say that we need to move on. We've got drunk driving pretty well curtailed, and I simply ask them, "How can I tell the nearly eleven thousand moms and dads who have lost their loved ones that things are getting better?" You know, I noticed, uh, drunk driving is, is everywhere. Police be, week ago Friday, thirty-one-year-old Jacksonville young lady arrested and charged DUI, no license, no insurance, at two seventeen in the morning. These are potential killers that you and me are sharing the roads with. They may be good people, but they're not good people when they get impaired, so we're trying to make a difference. And I'm sharing these numbers with you in hoping that you can use my presentation and what you've heard. I'm sure you've heard from a lot of people on this special use permit, and I simply ask that, uh, will it benefit the village? Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. All right, we have three sets of minutes. We have... Regular minutes from September fifth, regular minutes from June twentieth, no...
Special, nine nineteen.
Special minutes from nine nineteen, regular minutes from nine five, and special minutes from June twentieth. Motion to approve one at a time or separate? I don't care which...
Yeah, the correction on September the nineteenth.
On the ninth.
September nineteenth.
September nineteenth.
I was president. I was.
Wow.
Because I even made the motion to...
Yeah.
You were absent once. I guess I didn't push it back to you.
What? Oh, I live a bunch of weeks.
Did you say the Thursday, September nineteenth was a regular? Because wasn't that a special meeting?
It was a special meeting.
Yeah, so that should be corrected. It says regular.
It's special at the top, special board of trustee meeting, but it's regular minutes.
Regular minutes, a special meeting.
It's not closed. It's open.
Yeah, I got you.
Where...
Yeah, that...
Oh, I see it. Now I see that. I was looking at what's involved.
So, yes, so...
Can we do it separately?
Sure.
Please.
Whatever, is that motion for one of them, or...
Um, I just want the special one separate because I was not in attendance, so I do not wanna approve those minutes.
Understand. So how about, uh, for the Thursday, September fifth minutes? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The, uh, Thursday, June twentieth minutes? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And the special board minutes from Thursday, September nineteenth?
With the correction.
With the correction noted. A motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye. I guess I'm opposed, Rob, right, because I...
Or you can abstain.
Yep, let's do that, then. Who's second?
Who's second?
I don't know. I'll, uh, I think I'll keep it up what you did.
I'll second.
Thanks.
There we go.
Thank you. I thought you did.
The one before.
We need to second the nineteenth. Somebody need to...
Tom did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He, he, we, he spoke up. Okay, motion to approve the, uh, August two thousand nineteen treasurer's report? Oh, sorry, is there any correspondence? No, no correspondence. Thank you. August two thousand nineteen treasurer's report? A motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Accounts payables for September two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve?
Oh, hold on.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
You got ahead of yourself. I gotta read off all the...
Oh!
Yeah, two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and seven cents on general fund checks. Yep. Total tip checks, two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eight, one hundred eighty dollars, twenty-six cents. Total MFT checks, one thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars, fifteen cents. Total tourism checks, nine thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars, thirty-four cents. Total water sewer deposit refund checks, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, sixty-four cents. Total checks, two hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. The total payables for this month were four hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Yes.
I just wanna make sure that all the trustees are aware that that tip figure includes the barley grain that was pulled out last month.
Correct.
So I wasn't trying to slip it in there. We just put it back in.
Yeah, I just saw it correctly. Yep.
No, we tried.
That's a big old check.
What's this for, please? Signature?
So Dick, you still making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, let's jump down to the action items. Sorry, it won't take very long, I don't think. The, uh, special use permit. A motion to approve the special use permit for the Class A establishment at seventeen twenty-four A South Main Street?
So moved.
Are you second? If not, it'll die?
I'm gonna second this for several reasons. I wanna get this over with, and we're gonna force a vote here tonight, so...
Okay. Roll call, please. Take your time.
Dick Sample?
No.
Todd Ward?
No.
Paul Stewart?
No.
Jason Hill?
No.
Greg Nelson?
No.
Tom Jordan?
No.
The animals. Resolution to close South Main Street for Veterans Day Parade, November eleventh at ten a.m.
So moved?
Uh, second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Take your time.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm putting two proofs on, uh, images here for the... And for the South Main billboard, Dick, uh, sorry, Greg, did you wanna cover the second one we talked about as well?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go ahead and do the Halloween one first.
Okay, good idea.
A motion to approve the Halloween image that's going up. A second. Yes, that is that one, correct. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we got, it's the same item on the agenda, but we got two images, so the other one I'm gonna talk about.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
He's moving. Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yep.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
And we got a email from Lamar. They have a half-off thing going right now for the vinyl, so I talked to Greg briefly, and Greg, you wanna go ahead and...
Yeah, um, we thought it made good sense to get something in for, um, November, December for the holidays since we would have the opportunity after Halloween. And so, uh, this is the one from last year.
That's the one from last year.
He went back and pulled the one from last year, which was this one, that was on the table, I believe, when everybody came in. And if everybody's cool with that one, then that would be...
Or, or...
Oh!
Can you just show it to us?
Yeah. Wasn't even thinking about that.
They're not, yeah, I think they're, oh, sorry. Or what we could do is we could approve putting up a holiday one and then have an image at the next committee meeting, just pending approval of the, of the image at the next committee meeting, but we could go ahead and approve putting up a holiday one now. Does that make sense?
When would this go up, the way?
Up right after Halloween. Because they, they only... They only come once a month, so probably... Well, my thought was, is if, if it's a generic holiday theme, we could get two months' use out of it, leave it up for all November and December.
Here, if you want.
So, a motion to approve a holiday-themed one pending the final approval of the image at the next committee meeting?
Good wording. So moved. You want a second?
Sure.
Give her a second.
Yep, I'll second.
Okay.
I guess I just get out when I go.
This is okay the way it is.
Did you...
Yes. We're fine.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Sample?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
And this is approving pending next meeting? What did you...
Yeah, because we're gonna talk about the art again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the final approval of that image at the next committee meeting. All right, moving into the mayor's report.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
This one, the next one, we'll approve this one.
That, if there's any tweaks to that one, we'll approve, we, uh, the... Final image, we'll approve at our committee meeting. Just with a strong...
Harry, do you mind before you start? I just wanna say something to Larry Moore. Is that okay, from the plans?
That's okay.
Commission, I, I wanna make a public statement that I appreciate the work the plans commission did for the action item tonight that we voted on, and I wanna publicly say that, um, my particular vote was no reflection on the way you handle plans committee meetings. I think you handle them exactly the way the board wants you to. Your job is to see that everything is in line and in order to bring it to us, and so I just wanted to say that publicly because I think you do a great... And so I just wanted to say that publicly, because I think you do a great job, and I did not want a unanimous no vote to be any reflection on the vote from your committee, if that makes sense.
I agree, I feel the same way.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Thank you, Harry.
I think we're unanimous across the board here on that, Larry.
We appreciate what you do, Lawrence.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
The forgers.
Most exciting thing of the night, right? Some of you who don't know me, I'm Suzanne Steckel. I'm a partner at the Ballers. Um, what we'll do now, you guys will look in front of you. I'll, I'll try to just hit the highlights. There's a lot of pages we skip over, so you guys feel free to comb through it in your, uh, spare time. If we flip over to the independent auditors report, this is actually our report on the village. It's a standard audit report and an unqualified opinion. Meaning that, you know, everything is fine. There's no exceptions to your opinion. If we look to page five, um, page five is actually the balance sheet for the governmental funds. Um, so a couple of things I wanted to point out, point out, is the total cash for the government is down by about a million dollars this year. All of that is due to the TIF spending that happened with the school district, the South School project. Um, you'll also notice a column that's your total non-major funds. That can change. Last year, MFT was a major fund. This year, Road District took its place, so the non-major funds are MFT and drug. So that's what makes up that column, and there's some detail in the back, um, about those funds. If we skip over to page seven, page seven is actually the statement of revenue and expenditures for the governmental funds. The one thing I wanted to point out is your overall revenue is up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Two hundred and thirty of that is all in your intergovernmental, which is like your income tax, your sales tax. But what made up the biggest portion was you guys finally received that final MFT payment of about a hundred and forty thousand on the Route two sixty-seven and Bartlett Green project. So that's why that income, that's the biggest portion of that. Um, in the expenses at three point four million dollars, they're up by about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, you'll, you can look across the capital outlay, and eight hundred and fifty-four of it is the TIF School project. And it also then debt service includes the first loan payment you guys had to make on the nine hundred thousand that you borrowed for that project. Um, to just kind of touch on the capital outlay and the general fund, you guys bought two police vehicles, you did the improvements at Godfrey Park, and you guys also started the Michigan Avenue project. So, um, those were some of the things that make up that two hundred and ninety-one thousand. If we flip over to page nine, nine is actually your balance sheet for your proprietary or business funds, which include your water sewer fund and your ambulance fund. Your cash for those two funds are down about eighty thousand dollars, but you're still, especially for the water sewer, you're still sitting at six and a half, seven months worth of cash. Last year, we were eight months, um, but, you know, any village that can get over two or three months, I'm pretty happy with. Um, some of the things you'll actually see, because this is a business-type activity, your assets that you purchase are listed on this page. Um, there's no comparison to last year, but the things that water sewer purchased were a new truck, there were new meters, as you guys are trying to finish that meter project. And then there was the start of the building construction that you guys are doing. If we flip over to page ten, ten is the revenue and expenses for the business-type funds. Revenue's up by about a hundred and somewhat thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand in water and sewer, ambulance was up by seven thousand. Um, if we look down at the operating expenses for your water and sewer, unfortunately, the expenses were up by a hundred and sixty. Um, the three big categories, salaries were up by twenty-two thousand, which included some overtime raises. Overtime was mostly due to main breaks. And then you guys had some emergencies, like the fire at the lift stations and things like that. Um, contractual services were up by a hundred thousand dollars. That included lift station stuff and a new, uh, dehumidifying system, which I, I remember right, that was like twenty-five thousand dollars. But it's below your capitalization, so it doesn't go to the front page, you just expend it all. The other thing was the sewer contract with the city. It was up by about twenty-five thousand. So that makes up your, um, increases in, um, operating expenses. The other thing to point out, if you look down the ambulance fund, general fund did give fourteen thousand dollars to ambulance fund. So your ambulance fund looks like it has a profit of fourteen thousand, three eighty-four. It really was only three eighty-four, but at least it was positive. It's been a lot of years. Since that ambulance fund's been positive, so that's a good, that's a good sign. If we flip over to page eleven, this is the cash flow statement. I won't spend much time going over it, but it just gives you a breakdown of how your cash was spent or received, um, between your business-type funds. So just water and sewer and ambulance. It doesn't do government funds. Okay, we flip to page thirteen. Thirteen, we started the list of financials. These lines from page thirteen to thirty-seven. I'm only gonna touch on a few highlights. So if we flip to page twenty-eight. Twenty-eight is your deposits, and so it gives you the total bank balance at four thirty-one, at three point two million. That's all the cash for the village. The one thing I wanted to point out is you have three hundred and eleven thousand dollars that's not insured. This is money the village has decided to leave in the Illinois funds. The Illinois funds, several years ago, turned into more of a security-type fund, so they have potential to earn more money for the village, but they don't have, they don't have any insurance. So if Illinois funds went belly up, there's no guarantee the village would get their three hundred and eleven thousand.
How do you correct that?
I mean, it would be your guys' decision if you wanted to just move it to regular bank accounts. I mean, I would tell you, right now, there's not a lot of, not a lot of risk with cash. I mean, you haven't seen any banks go defunct in, you know, a long time. But if you guys chose as a board, you wanted to do that, and you just move it to another type of a institution that did allow for extra collateral or FDIC insurance, so. Okay, on page twenty-nine, I wanted to point out, um, you guys did make a loan to Road District for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in general. So at this point, that's something that's intended to be paid back over the years. The next section in note eight are transfers. So you can see the fourteen thousand dollars that went from general fund to ambulance. You also see that, um, drug gave general thirty thousand dollars, and I believe that was the help pay for the new vehicles that were purchased, was the purpose for that transfer. So those are permanent transfers. There's no loan that has to be paid back with those transactions. We flip over to page thirty-one. Thirty-one, I'd just like to show you out, note nine, gives you your payment schedule on the loan you guys have for the South Jacksonville project. So you guys made a hundred and seventy thousand dollar principal payment last year. This year, your principal payment will be sixty-five thousand, which is with the addition of twenty thousand of interest. And this loan goes through two thousand and twenty-eight. We move to page thirty-three. I didn't point it out when we were back on page five, but Road District is your only fund this year that has a deficit fund balance. So you guys loaned a hundred and twenty thousand dollars so that there wasn't a negative cash balance, but that doesn't correct the deficit fund balance. So, you know, it's a matter of Road District either spending less to get that fund balance back to the positive, or the other option the village has at some point down the road is if they decide they wanted to make that not a loan and a permanent transfer of that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's, you know, something else you guys can discuss. Okay, we're gonna flip to page fifty. Page fifty is the schedule of equalized asset valuation, tax levies, rate extensions, and collections. I wanted to point out that your equalized asset valuation increased by two percent. So you went from forty-two point one to forty-two point eight. If we look down the two thousand and eighteen column, you are anticipated, which probably you guys have been doing now, um, in this next audit period, you will collect four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars between general, Road District, and police. Plus, you'll also have the TIF to add in there. If you go down the seventeen column in the total tax collected, which does include the TIF, you guys collected property taxes of one point one million in the audit that we're looking at now. Okay, we flip to the next page. It's the internal control letter. Um, this is where we point out maybe some of the deficiencies. The village had the opportunity to respond to some of these. So as we go through them, um, we do have one more finding than last year, but really, they're kind of combined, and as a total, the whole audit for the village was much smoother this past year than it's been for five to ten years. Um, the one big finding that was removed was segregation of duties. You guys always had segregation of duties because you had such a small office with only one person pretty much handling everything. Then you guys had Alice and Tiffany both here. They were segregating duties and kind of watching, you know, it was kind of checks and balances. Um, you had Alice, who was reviewing the financials, preparing the payroll reports after somebody else had done payroll. Um, I can't, I don't know, I know they maybe shared the bank reconciliations, but they were looking, both of them were looking at them to catch anything that maybe, you know, there was a check that happened to get written that the board didn't know about. A deposit that didn't make it to the bank that you expected to be there. So that was one of the findings that we were able to take away this past year because the internal controls, as the village intended them to work, were actually working. So we did, as we do our testing, we didn't find anything that was like, oh, you guys say you're gonna do this, but really, you do this. You were actually following your internal controls, and you were segregating the duties where you could.
Suzanne, I have a question about that, uh, and I think that's great, a great finding. However, we've had that contractual employee for three years, so I'm curious as to why that segregation has just been removed now.
Partially because we were still finding issues as we were doing testing.
Okay.
I think it was just a matter of still trying to clean things up. There were, I mean, there was a lot that had to be corrected, you know, when Alice got here and Tiffany as well. So it was just multiple years of, you know, you saw it improve, but you didn't see it improve from my point of view enough to where I felt like I could remove that finding until this year, so.
Did you see an increase in duties then, that were shared? Because the way it started, so were the duties then that were shared, or then you said two sets of eyes? Did that increase over the three years?
Yes, I, yes, it definitely did. And I think because Tiffany was new, I think there was more Alice was doing, and then it became more that Tiffany was doing and Alice was reviewing. So it, you know, kind of had that, that check and balance.
Okay.
That just got to the point where we wanted to see it. And then you were able, and you know, and it didn't, doesn't just stop with Tiffany and Alice, you know, even the billing clerk, you know, you guys had change in billing clerks over and over. And so you've been able to keep some of the same staff for multiple years. That helps. That helps to where when you're going to ask for and invoice everything, all the backups there you need to see. When your checking payroll rates and time cards, everything's been approved, and it's been, you know, it's, it looks how it's supposed to. So, and once again, we sample. We don't test everything.
Okay.
We pick a sample, and so, you know, there's always the possibility that we've missed something, but, you know, in the sample, we saw it was much better than it had been.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the findings, number one is still the same as last year, and it's because of that Illinois funds, uncollateralized money. Um, number two was expenditures exceeding budget. The only fund you had that happen in was your Road District. Last year, you had the same finding, but it was in the MFT fund. So this year, MFT was good, and Road District, we have, um, an overage. Finding number three, um, when the money was loaned, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, they were correcting an issue from last year's audit. Um, the village was unaware that you had to bring it to the board to actually approve it in the minutes. So there was discussion about it, but it was never a formal approval. So everybody's aware of that, but that has to happen now. Um, the next one was the same thing with the ambulance fund. Um, you guys transferred money twice in the ambulance fund. Um, and this one of them didn't make it to the board. It got discussed in a committee meeting, and I believe, you know, approved, approved as it can in a committee meeting. I just have to look for the final board minutes, and it wasn't there, so. And then the last one was, we talked a minute ago about, was the negative fund balance in the ambulance fund, and that's gonna be, continue to be a finding. I mean, I think it's gonna be a while before Road District can have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay back. So unless you guys decide to make that a permanent transfer, that will continue to be a finding until they don't have a negative fund balance. And fund balance is different than cash, because it wasn't a negative cash balance, it was just a negative fund balance. But once again, these kind of go together, so I mean, when I look at the findings, I mean, there's, you know, two or three of them that I feel like are just, you know, right there together. So, you know, as I was having to write them up, I really struggled, because as I walked away from the audit, I think we spent about a half-day last year than we have the last five to ten years. And I just felt good about really walked away, so, you know, overall, things were just in good shape, so. The last thing, I'll just take a minute of your guys' time to talk about, is the communication with government. This just states that we didn't encounter any difficulty when we were performing an audit. We've attached journal entries for you guys to see, so you can see the suggested journal entry and entries that the village agreed needed to be made. We didn't have any disagreements with management. Um, Tiffany and the mayor signed a management representation letter, which is a requirement. It just says they've given me everything to do the audit. Nothing's happened since I was here that I need to deal with. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to point out, and we have this here for several years, under the other audit findings and issues, it like still really, really great thing for the village. If you guys could get your billing system from water and sewer to where it's only one month behind instead of two months. Um, you know, it just, there's a lot of receivable out there for the village this way, and, you know, just as soon as you can get your cash, the better off you are. I know it could potentially, depending on how you decide to do it, be a hardship for the, you know, for the citizens, if for six months, you know, you bill an extra week. You know, I, I don't know what the exact answer is, but I think you just need the ability, effort to get that to where it's just one month behind versus two months, so. Now that was quick and dirty. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
How, how long have you been doing this for the village, yourself?
Myself, uh, I've been doing this since two thousand thirteen. Before that, John, yeah, before that, the other partner at my firm, John, I had probably done it for twenty or thirty. I mean, I, it's been a long time. I'd have to go back and look, but, yeah, it's been a long time.
I need somebody to refresh my memory on the hundred and twenty thousand dollars loaned to the Road District. What was that for?
Um, I'd have to go back. It's been three years from now.
It's just, I mean, the street department brings no money in, so basically, every year, general fund funds it because there's no.
Okay, that's all.
Income, so it's, it's kind of misleading, not misleading, it's misleading when you think it's a loan. This is, this is the protocol, this way it goes, because that's why Tiffany and I have tried to take the street department budget and pension as much as we can, because it's all coming out of general. There's no money, no revenue for it, so it can't fund itself. So this is a, just an ongoing situation, and like you said, it needs to be a.
Transfer.
Transfer, not a borrow, because there's, it will never get paid back, because it's, it's general fund.
That's what was thrown at me.
Right, it just sounded like it was something special.
And it was two or three years ago that I think there was some negative expenditures that happened at the end, and so I think typically, you guys were doing transfers to Road District.
Right.
Well, it got to April thirtieth, and the transfer didn't happen, so when we were here to do the audit, the cash balance was negative in the way. Because Road shares a cash account with general fund and a couple others, so.
That's a good way to put it, it shares the account.
Yeah, there's several funds that share one general checking account.
Okay.
So, I think that's just how it slipped through the cracks, and a transfer didn't get paid that year.
Right, it's always been that way, just giving you transfers.
Okay.
Before, uh, Alice had taken in and Tiffany was here, who did you deal with, far as, what, you're saying that it was because of Alice's duties that we got relieved of this? And you said because it was so preserved person before. I, I would, but it was just one person then, at that time?
There was, yeah, well, I don't know if there would have been two, so I'd have to go back, and I'm not gonna forget names, so people help me.
No, I don't mean they, I just.
But yes, but it was typically, um, I'm trying to think, there was one person sitting in the office, so yeah, it probably was one person. But I mean, I remember coming here and living before you guys were here, and January, when there was nobody left, and us trying to figure out how many people paid and how W two was gonna get done. And that's when the village agreed to, you know, call Alice and get her in here, kind of, so I mean, it had really just got, because of the turnover that happened and the way people left, there wasn't training that was happening. And so it just got to a point to where it really, I mean, there were books and records, but they weren't good books and records. You guys weren't getting good financials every month as you were, you know, meeting as you should, the board, I guess I should say.
Sure.
I guess I should say, the board wasn't getting good.
Okay.
Maybe this in my place, but I mean, just, I think to help answer that, you gotta remember the former mayor was A C P A. So he did a lot when he was in here that would be that second person's place that didn't need to have a person. I mean, I'm just trying to help answer the question.
And I, and I think that's probably a good, you know, he could, he could review things and notice when things, you know, maybe weren't right. Maybe they didn't get fixed as timely as they should have. But there, you at least did have, but you guys, even when he was here, there was a segregation duty finding. I mean, that finding has been there for, I'd have to go back and look, but I guarantee 10 years. You know, because it just, you know, things weren't happening as they should. When we came in and had to suggest multiple journal entries, you know, it just, it, it's a problem. Or when you test payroll or you test vouching, you test the water sewer bills and you continue to find problems with deposits or, you know, billing rates or, you know, people not being turned off or invoices not kept for payments that were made that the board approved.
But also lack of basic, yeah, because of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is, I mean, you guys, for as small of a village as this is, there's a lot going on. There's a lot that happens inside here. So, you know, I, I do agree it's a lot for one person. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I mean, it's a lot for one person to handle. So. The more the board can be involved, if you do have one person, you know, I mean, it becomes your guys' responsibility to make sure you're reviewing and approving and making sure expenditures are happening as they should be. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, website presentation. Matt had a baby girl, so he's not gonna be here today. So he said he'd make our committee meeting, is that right? So, all right, so we'll skip that one. Let's see here, October 24th is the safe Halloween. Last couple of years, I went to the, went there, dressed up, handed out candy. I will be on vacation this year, so if anybody wants to volunteer, they usually do up a room for us. It's themed. If not, we'll let them know and somebody else will take that room. But they usually decorate the room for us and they get to show up, dress up and hand out candy.
If, if nobody else can do it, I'll, I'll put myself there. But obviously I'd rather be a, because I have small kids.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if everybody can, just, you know, I'll be a last minute shoe in there and I'll dress up as Dick.
We, we don't wanna scare the little kids, so keep that in mind.
We could nominate Paula to be.
Wait a minute, I'll dress up as Mr. Samples.
That's right. That's right. But we could nominate Paula to be the wicked witch, witch.
That would work.
Of the south.
I didn't say that.
So just keep that in mind. I don't know what their deadline is to keep the room or not, so. Uh, let's see, Jacksonville Main Street, they have their pumpkin festival then on the 26th. And then building permits, hold on a second, I buried it.
Hey, Greg.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, go ahead while I'm digging for the building permits. Go ahead and talk about.
No, we didn't, I didn't get it.
I don't.
We've gotten on our website a public announcement that we'll be doing higher flushing next week, the weekend of 7th. It'll be Monday through Friday.
And while we're doing that.
Twice a year we're doing it in April, we're doing it in October.
When was that again?
The 7th through 11th. Monday through Friday next week, fire harder flushing.
And while we're doing that flushing.
On the radio, we had the public announcement coming on our website also.
We got that handy.
It is on Facebook as we speak.
Yes, it is.
Our social Jackson.
We try to get it out.
And while we're doing that, people should expect some discolored water. It's safe to drink, it's not a boil order, thank you. I avoid doing any whites if you have any discolored water, but if you let it run just a little bit, it should flush right out, so. Our building permits, we had a total of nine building permits, estimated cost of forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and permit fees for a hundred and fifty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Also should make notice that we do have a new building inspector, code enforcement, whatever.
Code compliance officer.
There we go, code compliance officer. And now's the time we would schedule our committee meeting. Everybody like Tuesday?
Yes.
How about we do the?
It seems like we're tearing this off faster and faster.
It does seem that way. Would the 22nd work?
I have no problem.
Works for me. 6:30?
Rob, can you come?
All right, well, I'll check, I think, again.
Because sometimes that puts us behind if we have things we want to ask you about.
Sure.
October 22nd at 6:30? Dick, are you gonna call Mr. Finch?
Finch, yeah.
All right, sounds good. We'll make sure he's on the agenda. And committee reports, personnel, we talked about some contracts, but other than that, it was great conversations, planning in public facilities.
On that, with Tim on vacation, he asked me to get.
Yeah, we got him. He's, they're the last, so. That's all right. We'll get to it, though.
I think so. What's up?
You're on, you're on stage.
I thought that one was yours. I don't even remember who's on it, who's the chair.
I'm not on the chair, I don't think I'm any of them.
Mr. Nelson is.
Um, thank you.
I'm on the committee also.
Well, it's not me, I know that.
Wait, which one?
Fighting in public facilities.
Yeah, I'm on that. I've got nothing in my notes.
If you guys remember, there was nothing on that agenda for.
There wasn't anything on there for anyway.
But while we're talking about it, I will say that it's looking like, I'm hoping to it, but it's looking like maybe next Tuesday, we might get the plant fired back up and they did some preliminary testing today on stuff and sent a command out to turn on, turn off, and things are looking good. So with a little luck next week, we could be back on our system, so.
You said Tuesday, John?
Yes, Tuesday is the day we're gonna try to fire it and then.
Do you have an estimate or not going to hold you to anything? Wild guess what it has cost so far?
Oh, I'm, I'm guessing with water purchase, everything, probably around four hundred.
Yeah.
That's right there. And I mean, it probably gonna come in a little more, but that's pretty close.
And we're only responsible for five hundred dollars?
As of right now, that's it. That was our first deductible. We've received two, three checks so far, so.
Hold on to your B P for next year, one day.
That, that costs us a little misleading because we're still selling water, so.
And then as far as the lift station, we are back online out here on the new system. It's been a long go.
That's one of the things we approved tonight, it was fifty thousand dollars, but we spent fifty, but we got fifty back.
That's already been, that was from insurance, they've already paid. That was just a transfer and that is the final pay on that. There'll be some fine tuning and stuff they have to do, but for the most part, it's, it's done. We switched from 208 power to 480. So they've gotta come and pull the old motor out, take it back. Well, it was rebuilt, but now they have to switch it for the 480 power. Then we'll have two pumps back and they're rotating, so.
And the trucks?
The what?
The trucks.
Oh, yes, dump truck sold, the 89 brought thirty-five hundred dollars. The 15 did not, did not hit our reserve. So we are putting it on the police department's Facebook account. We're gonna run it for a week and just see what that brings. It's not a bid type, we put a price on it. Now we've already did it. It's still legal because it's not, it's not one person. Anybody can make that offer or make an offer. So we'll see where that goes. And then if that hasn't worked, we've got a couple of other things in mind to sell.
All right, finance?
The only thing we had for finance, Cory, who is here somewhere, right there. Cory sent us a letter, it was in the packet on October 1st. And I think Ms. Tiffany was going to review or contact the other bank to see if that affected anything, if we took the money out of.
I did contact them prior to Cory's letter.
Okay.
I contacted Cory after I contacted John Rome. And then that's what F M B has presented. I have not gone back to the F B, Prairie State Bank. I don't know how far you want me to go with this, if we're going one, you know what it means? But give me some direction and I'll do that. But that's how it stands now. In the email I sent out, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see it.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, Prairie State Bank had said they would go to 1.6% on the tourism account only. And if we withdrew the tourism account, that would not affect any of the other rates.
Okay, that was the question, I was.
It was in an email, I didn't know if anybody saw it. It was.
The Prairie Bank will go 1.6?
On tourism only.
Yes.
And all the others stay as they are now. Cory presented a new proposal.
1.5 on tourism.
Right.
0.85 on village acres escrow and general savings counts, is this correct?
It should be the 0.5 on basically all of them except for the general checking. The general checking was 0.85.
Which does beat Prairie State Bank then, as that is, with the exception of the 1.6 for tourism. Overall, though, I think you would have an increase in interest depending on what those other balances are.
That's what my suggestion would be, we just lay them out side by side on the 22nd.
Excuse me, I'm confusing you.
Yeah, and that way we could just, both of them be side by side.
I think we do this in a committee meeting and talk it over.
Exactly.
And if you have to change the rates between now and then, totally understand. I mean, this is based on a day to day thing, basically.
Higher, higher preferably.
Still like to get 4%.
I really do suggest so if, if and when we do decide, if we could decide for like a year, you know, because it is, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, not complaining, but it's a lot of work to move all that over. And it's money spent and also on new checks, you know, and time for everything, so.
Was it just set on the six month just because of the, the whole move?
Just the way it all went down.
And it's, it's good because it's for additional revenue, you know what I mean? But I'm saying like just looking in the future, we could.
Yeah. Oh, you're absolutely correct. My opinion.
I thought it was a good idea, put a six month deal, so.
And we also had.
It's working out.
We also had the tip business, that'll be, we'll have more detail at the next committee meeting.
Cory, can you make it to the meeting on the 22nd?
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good. Parks and tourism, I don't think we had anything, did we?
The billboard that we already voted on and.
I see they were, are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
I seen they were putting the mulch in the other day, John. Are they done with that or?
They are real close. They ran out of mat, so I need to go get some more ground cover for them. Doing a real good job, so. Let's say as soon as I get the big roll of that for them, they'll knock it out pretty quick. So they, they're probably eh, two thirds of the way done.
Yeah, I seen they were over, basically down Arden.
Yeah, getting ready to come back up Greenwood. That's starting from the utility building, all that, all the way down.
They have the north side done towards your place there.
Right, yep, so it's looking good.
All right, and public protection?
Tell them about the surplus truck that's all dolled up and looking pretty parked over there?
Yeah, we took it on the back, it's already put it in service. Decal, light, iron, right here.
Did you get a warning from the water department?
Yeah. We did have all the repair calls.
Yeah, or the package.
Was it, oh, what do you got? That was a joke, John.
Yep, month September, pretty busy for us. We have fifty-six calls. I just kinda wanted to know, since I've talked about this in the past, but thirty-seven of those calls were between 6 a.m. and 6 p.m., which is pretty rough for us to pull off, but we did what we could do, so. So that puts us at four hundred and one calls for the year so far. And as discussed in committee last week or week before, I talked to you guys about purchasing five new nozzles. Those are ordered, so they won't be in payments until next month. But those are orders, so those will benefit our fire suppression need pretty well. And just another thing is the pickup truck we just talked about, so.
Who are the nozzles gonna be from?
Passports tips. I'm not sure if they'll be, if it'll be billed to them or if we'll build your N E S.
Okay.
And we'll also do the ambulance at the boat races, doing well.
Not to put you on the spot, but Mr. Nelson and I were just discussing billboards and have you discussed anymore or thought anymore about open house?
Oh, yeah.
Down the road, springtime, maybe?
I mean, we could, we did try. Cory came down, what month was that? With us, the police department did that and.
I perused.
It was June because I think we were on vacation.
Okay.
So I mean, we did, we did, we had a few people coming, it wasn't a problem.
Okay.
But I mean, there's, I think there's some more stuff that we could, me and Tim, if we get together and maybe have some activities planned. This would cause just a general come and check the fire comes up idea. But we can come up with some different things for people to come and do. It might work out a little bit better next time.
How many members you got in that?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Old business? New business?
Old business.
Old business.
I would like to know my status. It's been two months and I wanna know if I'm still on hold or if, because I have been contacted for other employment. And so I need an answer to what your plan is on.
Decided not to move forward with, with the contract.
Okay. Been nice if someone would let me know. This is not the way that I do business. And I thought you guys did a very poor job after all the service I had given you.
It was our understanding you were going to be told. At our last meeting that we all attended, that was the understanding. I did not realize you had not been told, Alice.
The last phone call we had, that's what I told you, is that they weren't going forward with it.
No, you didn't say that. You said there were enough members here to vote and they didn't wanna vote until everyone was here. And then it was on the agenda for the 24th and then I didn't hear anything after that.
I, I didn't have to go back, but I apologize.
I don't think I misunderstood.
Maybe I miscommunicated then, because I, I thought I was clear when I said they weren't moving forward with it.
I just wanna thank you, Alice. If anyone else is going to, I will. Because honestly, this entire bunch has sat and heard our presentation from our independent auditor that says that these books are the best they've been in years. And I find it very ironic right now that our board is choosing to not continue that.
Hold on.
But I'm thanking you for that.
Please don't say that because I was letting that go through before I was gonna say that, so. So I will say thank you for everything you did and your time and your passion you have for the village.
Another question, what about my gain that we agreed on the next meeting I was at? I thought that everyone approved that and that was agreed upon.
I don't think there was an approval. I think it was, it was saying, it was brought up that if we did, the new contract was signed, that it was gonna be some kind of sign-on bonus.
That was my understanding.
So there was no, there was not a vote per se and there was not an agreement. That was gonna be stipulated to, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, in that committee meeting that you attended, that if the, the new contract was signed, that if the, the new contract was signed, then, you know, that was going to be voted upon whether we were going to put that on with that.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I, I mean, you guys convinced me to believe that if everything was going to be okay and that, that I would be working and then suddenly I don't know what happened, so.
Well, I stated, and I stated in that meeting, and I hope that you remember this, that, uh, there was this communication between you and your superior and obviously it sounds like that this is happening again. So I hope that you don't put all your mistrust or misfortune on the rest of the board members because, you know, that, that is out of our hands on, you know, the, uh, who gets ahold of you and tells you and everything like that, okay? I just want to say, I mean, because when you say you guys and you did this and that, you know what I mean? And that's why I stated in that meeting that you was in, that, that is the responsibility of your superior. Do you agree with that?
No one objected the night I was here, no one objected when you, when you, when you talked about it.
I understand, but I, I, I want to, plus getting straight on when you say that, when you said you guys, on that you was not notified, that, you know, it's not everybody's responsibility up here to, you know, call you and let you know or give you arrangements or whatever, okay? So I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Anybody else want to say?
Any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Second.
Greg, you got it.
You guys.
We had a look at it, yeah, that's what.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.